Okay. Evening, everybody. Call to order the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, July 17 at 7:00 p.m. I see a quorum present, but one member is online, so we are...
July 16.
Oh, sorry. July 16, 2024. You can tell I'm a little bit tired. Apologies. We have a member who's participating remotely, and so we are operating under slightly different rules. Allow me to read this. "In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which extend the governor's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30a, Section 20, until March 31, 2024. This meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. To join Google meeting, use the Google meets code HVBADIGMY. It's on our agenda, or you can call in 971-915-3832. The PIN number is 490-962-093." This meeting will be recorded by SMAC Cable Television Broadcast Live. It may be livestreamed at www.stotontv.org. A recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if the live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. So as I mentioned, there's a quorum here. Present in the hall is the vice chair, Scott Carrera, members Deborah Roberts and member Joe McChrisky, and participating online is Select Board Member Lou Gino. Lou, could you just let us know that you're able to hear us? Okay, one second. Looks like there's no sound on our meets. So one second, please. Try now. Mr. Gino, are you able to hear us?
Hello. Hello, this is Dolores.
Dolores, are you able to hear us?
Hello, Dolores.
We have no sound, right?
I think everybody's... Well, Steve is not... Steve's mic isn't muted now. You can hear me, I take it.
I can hear you, too. All right.
So we are able to hear you.
Okay.
And we're trying to fix the other one inside the hall right now. Give us one moment.
Thank you.
When the member is online, Mr. Gino, when you're able to hear us, please let us know. Mr. Gino, are you able to hear us now?
I can hear you, yes.
Excellent. Okay, so we've got all of our audio problems worked out. And I was just taking a roll call, as I mentioned. You weren't able to hear this, but it's part of the recording that we have. Four members present, myself, vice chair Carrera, and members Joe McChrisky and Deborah Roberts. And participating remotely is our Select Board Member Lou Gino. And I just wanted to... At the time, I asked if you were able to hear us, okay. Are you able to hear us now?
I am.
Excellent. Because of... We have a member participating remotely. All votes will have to be taken through a roll call, just a reminder to everybody. And whenever I do that, I always forget somebody, so I'm gonna write everybody's name down and make sure I don't do that again. But in the meantime, if you are able, please rise and join us in the pleasure of allegiance. Thank you. We're gonna start from the top of the items here. The first is Select Board comments. And I'll just begin to my left. Ms. Roberts, do you have any comments for today?
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I do. I have a couple of comments tonight. One is, I was talking to a resident, and they were asking about tax-deferred payment. And I have a copy of that exhibit. If you could show it for one second, SMAC. It's clause 41a. The age as of July 1st is 60 years or older, and the maximum income is $112,060. So 112, 160. There's no maximum assets, and the exemption amount varies. So as I was looking at and thinking about this deferred tax payment, it made me think about our fiscal year-end closing. Around this time, usually, the finance accountant provides us with a preliminary budget for fiscal year-end. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask Mr. Coulter, are we planning to keep the same schedule for the closing to have that preliminary information? And how are we doing?
Mr. Chairman, through you, the closing is on a much faster pace this year than any previous year in the last decade. As I think you may recall, the books were not closed for fiscal '22 until early November, which is completely unacceptable. It's Biz's intention to close the books by the end of summer, probably as early as August 15th. And that allows us many opportunities to do different things before we begin the budget process. As it relates to the tax deferment or tax exemptions, the town adopted that local option several years ago, but it has not been well advertised of that benefit to our seniors or that opportunity before our seniors. We very much intend to do a communication outreach to our seniors so that they know, as they consider their limited finances in the year to come, that this option exists for them to either defer or to exempt local taxes, property taxes, all or a portion of. Now, the state provides us with guidelines as to what they recommend, but it is clearly the will of this board and the option of this board to determine income, age, and the like. So we'll be... I think I circulated the statute, the law, recently. It's something that I would suggest the board consider as a policy decision as to what you're going to do moving into the next fiscal year, which would be FY '26.
And on that note, I asked our chairman to add it to... as an agenda item to a future Select Board meeting so we can make that decision and draft a policy to adopt.
Yep.
The second item... Second or third item I would like to discuss. This is good news, Select Board members and Mr. Coulter. This is regarding Fred Richards, who's going to the Olympics. He's a gymnast. I had an opportunity on Sunday, July 7, to meet with his agent. And then on Monday of this week, I met with the president of the person that is organizing the tour. So we drafted a quick outline of how we, the town, could recognize Fred Richards, what his availability is, and we narrowed it down to option one. I sent this right up to Mr. Chairman and to you, Mr. Coulter. And the option number one is to have an event on Sunday, October 6, because he would be in town. It's a tour that they're going... That's going to take place. And out of 30 cities and towns, Boston is one of them. They're already planning to have an event at the TD Gardens. So on Sunday, October 6, we could have something in Stoughton to recognize, like Kita City. We could have a raffle-off tickets to actually attend the TD Gardens event. Of course, the Select Board and you, Mr. Coulter, we will have admission tickets to this event. But here in Stoughton, we could have a parade if you would like. Also, we could develop some type of scholarship fund, and this would be an educational scholarship fund, and invite corporations, businesses to donate to this scholarship fund. And we could announce that on the day that we have this recognition here in the town of Stoughton or at TD Garden. So I would like to pass this off to you, Mr. Coulter, by way of Mr. Chairman, to see if that date, Sunday, October 6, will work, and maybe the recreation department can pick it up and further develop it. And so once again, it would be Sunday, October 6. Kickoff would be here in the town of Stoughton. Then we would go to TD Garden, and it would be a much larger, more inclusive event. And it's happiness. And I did see a banner... Things that I'm observing now, that we're talking about Fred Richards, that the Historical Society has a banner outside congratulating Fred Richards. And you know what? Whether he places at the Olympics or not, it is such a good, and it's a big deal because he made it that far. And it gives hope for all of us. In my eyes, in my personal eye, he's a hero because he did do this. He gives us all hope. So that's all I have to say. And through you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Excellent news, excellent ideas.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment through you to Ms. Roberts. First of all, I'm very excited about this plan.
Yes.
The only thing I would ask, and it's the same with the 300th Committee we're running into this, unlike fiscal '24, where we knew that we had half a year of dispatcher salaries to play with at the end of the year, there is none of that baked into fiscal '25. So we have to give serious consideration as we make plans. If it requires funding, where is that going to come from? We're meeting with the 300th Committee on this very issue next week because they're putting grand ideas, which are very exciting, out front and into cement without determining what's the expense. So all I'd ask is that we start crunching some numbers about how much time it's going to take from town staff for the 300th and for this, and what the cost would be because it's unbudgeted. So we have to find the resources. And it's very worthy.
Yes, it is.
Very exciting.
Thank you very much. Yes, all right, Mr. McChrisky.
I just re-question. I thought we had put money aside and in the budget at one time for the 300th Committee.
We did. I think we put like an initial...
$50,000.
$50,000, when? That was a few years ago?
No, it was during my time. It was probably during this budget process. It was a town meeting vote, I believe.
Didn't we... I thought we had one back to when Mr. O'Regan was here, that we had put some money into...
I don't think so. I think we opened the account, but I don't think we ever put any money in.
I'm pretty sure we did, but I may be wrong. Okay.
It just seems to be... There needs to be some clarity as to what that $50,000 can or cannot be used for. And if the $50,000 cannot be used for that, they have to make a decision as to where we would get funding for those other activities. Again, very worthy cause, but we have to be basically responsible.
Yeah.
I actually thought we were in a better position than that, knowing that we had this coming up. But that's gonna put a real tough challenge on those folks. I ran the 275th with a good group of people. Yeah, it's... We didn't spend a whole ton of money. We raised a lot as well, but it takes time. It takes time, so I'm just concerned with what we don't have now.
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So it was never intended to be the final deposit in the town's 300th, but we're talking now about process. No appointed committee can decide. Mass municipal law decides what we can pay for with that, what we can't, who we can pay and who we can't. We have no choice in that matter. So there has to be some degree of information sharing on how to do business and what our limitations are. If they want to bring before town meeting in the fall an article for additional funding, certainly they're free to do that. We just have to do it by the numbers.
I'd actually like to see Biz visit with them.
She did.
It was a short meeting. Shorter. I think they need a little bit more education.
She met them just the other day, and we're meeting with department heads on Tuesday of next week to let them know. Because it's not just funding. There are some standing committees that think that town staff is their full-time staff.
Right.
And they already have day jobs. So we just need to communicate business schedule to follow up with the department heads with the 300th Committee here for that meeting.
They need a roadmap.
Correct. That's a good way to put it.
They really, really, really need that. I've attended a couple of their meetings, and I don't want to be there at those meetings. Sometimes it can be a little bit of intimidation because I've run the parade, and you know, they've gotta come up with their ideas, but they've had some membership issues as well.
Right.
They've gotta...
It's a good group, though.
They are a good group of people, but they've gotta understand that nothing happens but to one person, you know? And so the... Okay, I'll leave it at that.
Actually, if you don't mind, I may be just taking a step further. You were involved in the 275th?
I was the chair, yeah.
Yeah. I spoke with one or two members of the 300th, and I did seem like... It did seem like they were... They had some questions, and they didn't really know who necessarily to ask. And so I was going to step in and put a little bit more time and energy into helping them out. If it's something you'd like to do as well...
I'll attend a meeting with you. I've said that in the past and given the examples of some of the things we did. But I think they need a roadmap. And I think they're planning on this big roadway project, a road trip across the country, and they're not sure how to get out of the state yet. So it... And again, I say that I struggled with the same thing, even being involved for as many years as I was. But you run an event like that only a couple times. You know, it'll be the only one that I've done. I have no intention of jumping on this one. But before me was Bud McMahon, who ran the 250th. So every 25 years, we're doing one, and you're starting fresh because times change. Times were definitely different when I was on the board then than it is now. Who would've thought? But it's really different. So the town has really changed, you know, with our residents. So we gotta adapt that as well. So a lot of new steps are there, and just to be able to get this stuff timed out, marching bands and so forth, some of them should be getting booked pretty quickly. And you know, so... But I'll help out, Steve, any way I can.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Carrera, sorry, Vice Chair Carrera, do you have any comments for today? Okay. And Mr. McChrisky, do you have any additional comments?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I've struggled... Yes, I do. And I'm, to this moment, struggling as to how this will come out. But I just feel that if we don't talk at a local level, I don't think we get the embodiment of how serious things are in our country right now. And we see it in local government as well, the mood of people, the committees that argue more than they used to, that hold grudges more than they used to, accuse people of falsehoods more than they used to. Town managers joked and said, "You're old." And I said, "You know, the thing is, I can say..." He said, "Yeah, I know that. I'm a little older now. I've been here for 21 years now." And the changes that we've seen in our own town and now nationally is that I don't think that too many people really think about it, as to how we can all make a difference by just being who we are and treat other people the way we want to be treated. Don't judge people on facts you don't know. You know, when we come to meetings, let's keep it civil. It's very easy for things to get out of control, and people get angry. The level of anger in our country right now as a whole is just something I hope we can get past, you know? And the events of last week with the attempted assassination of a presidential candidate, you know, by a 20-year-old man is just a new low in our country, you know? And I just urge the things that we've seen in our own town just recently, you know, with groups pointing fingers at other groups, you know, people yelling at other people in public meetings, using profanities. It starts here. It starts with each one of us. It starts with everybody in the audience. It starts with everybody at home. It starts with our committee members, our employees. The way that some people have treated town employees, believe me, I could go on, and I know the names, and I know who they've disrespected in town hall by people that should be smart enough to know that's not right, but it's done anyway. So I would just ask, not a comment, but a request, you know, with hope that, you know, we can change, that our country can change. And I don't know if a message like this will spread very far, but if it can't spread beyond the town of Stoughton, I hope that the people that are watching home don't accept that type of attitude from people. If it's a town employee, you know, treat them with respect, too, because I've been here before, and I've been a part of those discussions, when a resident that I knew came in yelling at somebody one time. And I said, "They can't change it by themselves. You're yelling for no reason. Why are you yelling?" And this lady just quieted right down and said, "You're right. I'm sorry." So I just... I hope that we think, look at ourselves in the mirror once in a while. I've done it a lot lately, believe me. And just say, "Am I doing the right thing? Am I saying the right thing?" You know, and do our part to make the world better. We don't have that far to go. We just gotta settle down a little bit, breathe, smell the flowers, I mean. So that's it, Mr. Chairman. I know it's kind of a babble thing, but something has to be said, and if we don't pay attention to what's going on, it's only gonna get worse. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. I want to add very quickly to that. And I don't necessarily know how this is gonna come out either, but when I was... I went to a very small college, and one of the... For as small as it was, I had a graduating class of like 95 people. You know, there were a lot of people there who were Albanian. It was, for some reason, it was a school that seemed to attract disproportionate number of Albanians. And I didn't really... Hadn't really run into many Albanians before that, and so I got to know a little bit about their culture and their history. It was very... They're thoughtful people who were very kind and very interesting, so I got to learn a lot about it. But one of the things that I discovered with the people I knew, who were just about my age, maybe a couple years older, is that their country had sort of political turmoil that you'd never want to see, you know? And we haven't experienced probably in at least several hundred years, or at least 100 and something years. And he and his friend of mine, he and his brother, went to a rally, and all they did was hold up a couple signs. And by the time they got home, their mother was... Said that the police were here, and they're looking for you. So they immediately packed up as much as they could fit in backpacks and took a boat to Italy and eventually worked their way through Europe and to the United States, and never saw their parents, family again. And that was because they just held us on. They showed up at the wrong place, and they had the wrong ideas, you know, for what the leadership wanted them to think. It's... It can be truly demented and how powerful a government can be and how really just any group of people can be. Was recently reminded that within the USSR's constitution, they had the same liberties that we did written into their constitution, freedom of speech, freedom of the press, freedom of religion. But those were not actually protected by anybody. And so they didn't, in practice, have any of those. So they could say, "No, our constitution, freedom of speech," but there was nobody who would uphold it. And, you know, in the US, we have a lot of institutions that will help us do that, but it falls on us. It falls on us. A democracy, it all falls on us. And as the people, we have to show up to vote. We have to care about each other enough to, you know, compromise, to find solutions to problems. And as we've gotten more accustomed to, you know, the sort of stadiums mentality of... that we have with screens, where we don't have to make eye contact with the people we disagree with, and so we feel at peace saying whatever we want, even if it's hurtful, even if it's very disrespectful, even if it's inhumane. There's a lot of jokes that I have heard recently about the attempted assassination of a presidential candidate, former president, that they trouble me because it's... You know, everyone wants to be funny, but like, the fact is that like, this is a very, very serious issue that we all have to face and be very realistic about. We can't live in a world, in a country where that's trivialized. And so I appreciate you bringing it up, and it's something that's just been weighing heavy on me. So I... Sorry for the diatribe, but there's... We shall be very troubled by where we are. I think a lot of people have been for a while, but, you know, it should be a wake-up call. We all have to wake up. I know Mr. Gino's on as well. Anybody have any further comments here? Nope. Mr. Gino, do you have any comments for tonight?
Yes, I do. I agree with an awful lot that was said the last few minutes. I won't go into that. I'd like, though, to go back to the financial issue that Ms. Roberts mentioned and add something to it. And that is that when I first came on the board, there was a draft policy to complete a long-range plan by the 15th of August. I mentioned this a couple weeks ago, that we needed to have that kind of a plan because people are asking for that. There's an awful lot of things that need to be done, and we... And they have said, "Well, lay out the items so that we know what we're dealing with." If we're going to have people get behind what we're doing, I think we have to be pretty transparent about all of the things that need to happen. So when you talk about the issue that Ms. Roberts brought up, I hope that you would be willing to put on that same agenda, seeing as dealing with finances, this other point. And the other part of that is that we need to think about how we're going to be able to fund the town operations in the longer run. We've seen several years where we've had... And we're not alone. There are about 100 other communities that have had issues with... Want to have your overrides or debt exclusions, some of which have passed and some of which have not. We have to look at how we can perhaps partner with others to do things in a different way than we have. And I think we need to get on that sooner rather than later. So my plea is that we'll start to talk about the financial issues, talk about a long-range plan, and bring people into the group of knowing where we stand and how we can get of knowing where we stand, and how we can get where we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. I know Ms. Roberts also has some additional comments.
Yes, when I originally mentioned about the fiscal year in close, I said it nicely, but inside, I'm passionate about this. I'm passionate about the finances, because if we don't know where we're ending, then it's hard for us to restart for this next fiscal year, even though we have ideas. And when things come up like the 300th anniversary, and we say, "We may not be able to fund," but we really don't know, or unexpected other items, and this is like Frederick's event, and we just don't know, well, I think we should have a very good idea every step of the way. And we're talking about transparency, and we're talking about trust. And we're talking about, the truth is the truth, no matter if no one believes it. And a lie is a lie if everyone believes it. But we're talking about transparency. And if we have a schedule, and we set expectations correctly, then based on this schedule, people know what to expect, and we get in a groove. And that's what encourages and increases trust. And that's what we're doing. We talk a lot about how we treat one another. And we talk about that it's a code. It's a code. And I would like for us to start and continue on with our code, code of honor, code of trust, code of truth. And that's respect. It's like a gentleman's handshake. We do this because we know that we can trust each other's word. And that's all I have to say. And I agree with Mr. Gito, and I agree with what you all have said about our code of conduct. And yes, let's get back to that, being heartfelt, and getting back to not being sensitive, but looking at data to help us tell the truth, no matter if people believe it or not. We talk truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. The next item on the agenda is town manager comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to figure out, really, the message I should be taking away from this. I heard at a previous meeting that we need a long-term capital plan, almost like we don't have one. We've got a very detailed four-year capital plan. And in fact, we're doing a public information session on that four-year capital plan in September, as long, when people return from vacations and school. So, I'm just a bit confused as to what it is we're not doing. In terms of the operating budget, now, that doesn't include the schools. We've requested from the schools that they incorporate their capital plans in with the omnibus town capital plan. They have yet to do that. They're working on it, but they have yet to do that. And I have no, absolutely no authority or control to compel them to do that. So, the four-year capital plan for your municipal government is online. It's available in hard copy. It's been presented, and it's going to be presented as it's updated again in September. That's full transparency. In terms of the operating budget, all I'm saying is that it took seven months to produce that operating budget, which this board voted unanimously for, and so did the FinCom, vote unanimously with no changes. Every single dollar that's allocated has got a purpose. It's a very responsible, comprehensive, detailed budget. All I'm saying is, we're running into several instances now where people have brilliant ideas. They're perfect. They're brilliant ideas, and they're exciting ideas. They're simply not budgeted. So, if we're talking about hundreds or a few thousand dollars, we'll cut something else to do it. If it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, we don't have it in the budget to find. And it doesn't mean we don't have a good budget. We've got a great budget, that was approved unanimously by both the finance committee and the board. It's just that we're being hit with a lot of unbudgeted expenses, or ideas. And again, I support them fully. It's what makes for a great community. I really do. But there is the fiscal side of every decision we make. But in terms of the long-term planning, if anybody needs a copy of our capital plan, which Mr. Tisdale updates with every single month, then we're happy to share it. But it's, the suggestion that doesn't exist is a bit baffling to me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have one other announcement. And, Mr. Chairman, I wish I had mentioned this to you before, but I get calls every day from people who were yes and no on the ballot question as to when the next election's going to be. I hope it's appropriate for me to announce that the school committee will provide a press release next week after they finish their deliberations with the MSBA. But is it fair to say, Mr. Chairman, there will be no election called for this calendar year?
Is that a fair comment?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have, sir.
At least, I don't know anybody here who's planning to call for one. But no, we're not looking to call for one.
And the school committee is not asking for one at this time.
Correct. Yeah. Mr. Carrera, you said, you mentioned you had some kind of comment you'd like to make.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on capital plans. Mr. Tisdale sat here, laid it all out for us, everything that they wanted to do, what they could do. And the whole thing is the money. And he said, like I said, things move in that plan. You might think they're number three, they might have to take a backseat and go to number 11. They might even be on the list next time. Our most important job is to assure the residents of this town all the services that we promised us to provide. That's all we have to do. Yeah, we know we need buildings need to be fixed and all that, and all this. Sometimes, it's just not affordable. You've got to maintain your workforce to deliver what we have all become accustomed to. So, when we talk about putting plans out, anybody can put a plan out. Every week, we could put a plan out. I will say, the town manager's right. The money is tight. It's going to get tighter. It's just, we have to watch what we do. So, if it's tight in this room, how tight do you think it is out on the streets where people are living, in their homes, with the taxes rising, that we have now become the highest home sale state in rent in the nation? That was just laid out. And three towns in our wonderful state are at the top, top, top. So, that's all I want to say, is people are feeling it, you can see it. And don't believe everybody's running out and buying new cars and all that, because they're not. They're not. They're trying to fix what they got. They're trying to keep their houses. They're trying to pay their bills that we sent to them for the services. And last year, I thought we did pretty good at 3.8. And that's probably one of the best budgets that I've sat on at 3.8. It's as flat as it could have been.
Do you think these exemptions, or publicizing these exemptions, would help especially for the seniors?
I think that's, I think that's something we have to bring...
You agree, Mr. Calder?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, at least they'll know about it, you know?
I was, Mr. Chairman, I was pleased to be part of the legislation that produced this exemption program. It's a much-needed option for seniors. And the town eventually gets its money when the senior sells his or her home, or passes away. So, the money does accrue. It does gather. But it gives our seniors who are on fixed income short-term relief, which affects everything they do every day, right? Because they're on fixed income. So, I strongly suggest, and I said this to Biz today and to our assessor, that we plan a fall information session on the law, and by then have the board's decision on, within the law, where your parameters would be. The original law was a $20,000 maximum income. But it's up to the town fathers, the town leaders, the policymakers, to decide where it is for Stoughton. You get the flexibility to do that. It's just three parameters you vote on, and then it should be published far and wide. If 500 people take advantage of that, it doesn't affect our ability to manage the town. But it can have profound impacts on those seniors. So, I thank you for raising it.
Thank you, Mr. Calder.
I appreciate everyone's participation in the discussion. I think it's all very healthy, so I appreciate having that conversation. The next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. Ms. Walsh.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. Any discussion in public about tax abatements for seniors should be at the senior center during the daytime. Having an informational session here after dark doesn't do most seniors any good, if they don't have a computer, or they can't listen in. And many seniors who still drive will not drive at night. So, even if the meeting starts in the daytime, if it gets dark, you lose them. They did this several years ago at the senior center during the day. And that's how I found out about the senior tax breaker. There's a circuit breaker. And this year, it was $2,500. It was $2,590. That's a heck of a chunk of my tax bill that I get back from... I mean, this isn't, Cynthia, eventually you'll sell your house and you'll pay this back. This is a state law. And it's called the tax circuit breaker for seniors. You have to be 65. $2,590, gone. I never have to pay that back. So, like I said, the meeting has to be at the senior center. It has to be publicized, and it has to be during the daytime. Or do it on smack, where seniors can pass the word and watch it be redone. But the reason I really grab the mic is there are 5,000 hours of live coverage of the Olympics. And there are 329 medal events. Nobody on earth has that kind of time. If someone, whether in the town or someone who's listening, can boil it down to those events that Fred Richards would be in, and we could give people on the town website the day and the time, so that even if they're working, they can sit there, whatever you guys record with now. I don't want to say VCR, because that dates me. But people who, like me, I don't watch the Olympics. I'm just not a sports person. But I happened to catch the trials, and to see Fred come out on top. And I'm sure there's people that have no interest in the Olympics, except that someone from Stoughton is going to be in the Olympics. And if you know where to watch it, and what time to record it, that would be a good thing. And did the historical society say he's our first Olympian? One of the news stations dug up the O'Donnell Middle School yearbook he was in. And he actually said he was going to be in the Olympics. I think he was 12. There's someone who's got tunnel vision. And I'm sure there's many people in Stoughton who would love to watch him in action. They just need to know when and what time and what station. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Actually, you bring up, you know, I think, a very important point about advertising this, using channels that are much more accessible to seniors. And I just wanted to ask the town manager if you wouldn't mind exploring, leveraging Council on Aging, Janice Bruce, whoever it might be, to essentially put together this information session. And it looks like you're already on it.
I took that note, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a great idea. And it doesn't mean we have to do it once, just can only do it once. We can cascade it throughout the community for a number of information sessions, but least of which should be the COA.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you very much for the suggestion.
Matt takes it as the Council on Aging, your vice chair. You do really only have to do it once. You know, you repeat and end this.
Thank you so much. So, I am going to take one item out of order, and then we'll move into the public hearings. Item number seven, this is originally scheduled for 8:40, but I would like to move it up just to, because we have some town employees who might be waiting for an answer on this. And this is to consider an appointment of interim town clerk. Votes may be taken. And just to provide context, and just give an update on what the purpose of this is, I'm going to turn it over to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to read a statement, just so I don't miss anything. Beginning this week, we will be advertising for the positions of town clerk and assistant town clerk. A seven-member employee committee will screen all applicants and present the three finalists to the select board as the appointing authority charged with choosing our next town clerk. This evening, I request that the board appoint my assistant, and I always struggle with her last name, Reggie Kowal-Zekowski, as our interim town clerk for the period July 16 through November 16. Reggie is a certified Massachusetts municipal clerk, and is halfway through her master's clerk certification. We're fortunate to have a professional with Reggie's qualities and training willing to serve during this transitional period. Her only commitment is to serve through November 16. She may or may not apply for the permanent town clerk position. I strongly support this appointment of Reggie as the interim town clerk, and will not replace her as my executive assistant until after a final choice has been made in November. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, as the board knows, this is completely within our discretion right now. Reggie is our acting town clerk. That was an appointment from the town manager, but it was incumbent upon us to fill this position as an interim, as an appointment from the select board. And I am going to, I think probably best would be to open up the discussion. We can move forward with the nomination, or if people would like to discuss other options. Reggie is online, so if we decide to pursue that recommendation, we can speak to her online as well. Ms. Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that we accept Reggie, the town manager's recommendation...
Madam Chair, you must say the last name.
Okay, okay. I'm like you.
It's not official.
Reggie Jawalzkowski, Reggie, as our interim town clerk for a period of through November 16.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Reggie, since you're online, I do want to just give you a moment if there's anything you'd like to say. If you don't, that's perfectly fine. But I wanted to give you a chance to speak if you'd like to.
I just want to thank the board for giving me the opportunity. And I wasn't really prepared to make a speech, but just thank you for the opportunity. And I'm looking forward to working with the team downstairs. And we'll work hard on the election and get through it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Reggie. Okay, so the appointment of interim town clerk, sorry, the appointment of Reggie to the interim town clerk position is made by Ms. Roberts, seconded by Lou Gito, by Mr. Gito. And because we have a member online, we'll have to take a roll call vote. So, I'll start with Ms. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
No.
And Mr. Kruski?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, as four to one. I appreciate you helping us out, Reggie, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, so we are now, we are running a little bit behind. We have two items to consider, both are public hearings. It's our practice to have Scott Carrera, our vice chair, take control over the proceedings as when we do public hearings. So, for the purpose of the public hearings, consider him the acting chair, and direct all of your comments and questions to him. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'll entertain a motion to continue and open up the continued hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Gito and a second from Ms. Roberts. I'll poll the board.
Lou?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's a 5-0 to open. This is a continuation on, it's been a while, and you wouldn't think it goes by so fast, but.
A month and a half.
I'll just use the shot, the shot version. The continuation of the public hearing is going to be with the animal control officer, Michelle. And it's a public hearing to determine whether the two dogs, Max and Marnie, habited 44 Atherton Streets, are nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs. The hearing took place June 4th, and at the hearing, the animal control officer, Michelle Carlos, was asked to revisit the home and check out, to observe the improvements made and report back to us within 30 days. So I would like to, is Michelle online?
Yes.
Yep. And Michelle, would you like to tell us what you observed, please?
Hi. So I went out to visit Mr. Holbrook, and he was very pleasant to deal with this time, and showed me all the improvements he made. I hadn't received any new complaints from the neighbors, so that was good. And I noticed both dogs had their collars on. They barked maybe once when I showed up, and they listened to him, went right into the house. And he has both dogs in training. So he said when the neighbors walk out, the dogs could care less now, just because they're getting used to it. So at this point, I don't think we need to deem either dog a nuisance or a dangerous dog, just because of all the changes Mr. Holbrook has done.
Thank you, Michelle. We did have, when you went to look, and it said the fencing was extended, and it stated that up to a growth area where the dogs would not go in. And he said that they were taking the dogs to training, like you said.
Correct.
That's good. Do any members of the board, Deborah, would you like to speak to this?
I have no question. I read the updates, and I completely understand. And I think the residents that made the original complaint, they are seeing the changes that were made by the dog's owner. So I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Cavey?
I don't have any questions. I would really like to very much to thank Officer Carlos for her work here and her diligence. And I also want to thank Mr. Holbrook for his cooperation and understanding, and as we work through this collaboratively as neighbors, to try to do what's best for everybody. So I thank you very much for putting the work in. I know you care very much about your dogs, and it shows. And I just want to express my gratitude to you. Thank you.
Mr. McCrisky, do you have anything to add, sir?
No, just a comment to Michelle for her job well done. It was a very good presentation and a great follow-up. Thank you.
Mr. Gito, do you have anything you would like to add, sir?
Yes, I would just like to thank Ms. Carlos and the Holbrooks for doing basically what they said they were going to do. I think that everybody was a stand-up person in this. And I think that hopefully peace is restored in the neighborhood. And I would suggest that we not consider the dogs a nuisance or danger.
Thank you. Is Mr. Holbrook on the line?
Yes.
He is.
Would you like to speak, sir? Josh?
Yeah, so I just want to say that, you know, I apologize to the fact that I was here in the first place. And I too want to make sure the community is safe. I don't want my dogs being in. And I will continue to make sure that they are safe and good dogs.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate everything you did. All right.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to open it up to anybody in the audience or anybody online that wants to add anything else to this hearing. Is there anybody in the hall right now that needs to speak? Is there anybody online that would like to speak?
Nobody online.
I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So made.
Second.
Joe, Deborah. I will poll the board. Deborah?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes. So what are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Vice Chair, I move that the board take no action on this request.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. I will go around again. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So that's, you're all set, Josh? There's no action against you. We appreciate everything you did, and it is now over, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I will continue to keep them good.
We know you will.
Thank you.
Best of luck, and welcome back home.
Thank you very much.
Well done, Scott.
Mr. Chairman, we have the next open hearing to be for, everything's going to test my language, Dulmage Ventures LLC. Are you in the hall? Toffee Social Bar in Lounge?
There's nobody online.
Do we want to?
Public hearing, they're not here.
What's that, Joe?
Public hearing, they're not here.
Well, we didn't open it. We can move it to another one if, and it'd have to be re-advertised.
Well, I personally would make a motion, you know, to close the public hearing. We didn't take it up, so we don't.
Take no action.
I take action.
All right.
Didn't show up.
I think this would be a motion to table indefinitely, which essentially would kill it. So it's a motion to table this public hearing indefinitely.
But they didn't show up for it. There's no public hearing. We didn't open it. So it'd just have to be re-advertized and come back when it's ready.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. So there's no action to take. Nobody showed up.
I would just take no action, and when they need to come forward. But I do think there might be... I'm just going to make a comment to the town manager on this one, that we had trouble with doing licensing last year a little bit. And part of it is that we were going to, if we opened this up tonight, we had stuff that was like...
Looks like she, our applicant's right to show up.
We can open it then. I don't know her name. Ma'am? Are you from Toffee Bar?
I am.
Would you like to come up, please? Hang on one second. We'll open the hearing for you. Just sit right down there. Thank you. I'll open it now, Steve. A public hearing will be held by the select board on July 16, 2024, at 8 o'clock PM to consider the application of Dulmage Ventures LLC DBA Toffee Social Bar in Lounge, located at 10 Wyman Street for an entertainment license to accommodate karaoke, vocal music with one to three performers, and instrumental music with two to three pieces amplified. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., and/or virtually in Google Meets and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for the public comment available by calling Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.com. I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So made.
I have a motion. I have a second. Joe? Deborah? Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes. 5-0 to open the meeting. All right. I do have correspondence, which is, we have the entertainment license application that has karaoke checked off, vocal music, one to three performers, instrumental music, number of pieces, two to three amplified. And the days of hours requested is Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM. And will the entertainment be outdoors? It says no. So that was put in by the owner. And we have a floor plan that was supplied to us. And we have, we have information from the town boards. And I just want to make a comment, Mr. Town Manager, on this.
Yes, sir.
That when we had licensing come in, and there was some questions about things, that we said that we weren't going to accept things that were over, like 60, 90 days. And there's a lot of responses in here that are from January, December 23, January 16. And I'll go through them so that you know which ones they are, sir. It's, the fire department gave us an approval, approved at January 11, 2024. We have from the police department, from Brian Holmes, that was 121823. And it says, "We respectfully request to the board consider the hours of this license and the impact to the adjoining residences." Then we have Board of Health, which was done 11624. "I would recommend hours restrictions to avoid noise complaints from residents above. No increase in occupancy and seating from current maximum of 36 seats. No increase in menu from current restricted menu due to..." I can't read it. "No grease trap." This business has a waiver and does not have an external grease trap. We also have an approval from the Jack Erickson, same thing, first of the year, the 11th, 24. And it says, "With all the attached info I requested in 122123, I believe she meets the requirement." And that's from Jack Erickson. Then we go to Teresa Cardoza, 1324. They have no problem. That's the treasurer's office. And the water department, Karen Brown, no objection. And that was 1824. So those are the, from the town departments. And I don't know what's going on in there now. We don't know if things have been moved around. It's, that was one of the things we had discussed when the stuff came down. I should have dug it out of my paperwork to show you, but I think we had talked about, like a 60, if it was over 60 days, it was, it was going to be, like, ridiculous.
I think that would be, through you, Mr. Chairman, I think that would be a good policy. I don't recall that policy. If it was voted during my time, then I should know about it, but I don't. So if that is the wish of this board, we won't consider anything that's older than 60 days. No issue with that at all. The only thing I would give caution to is, most of these towns have to meet with the applicant, you know, the Board of Health, the building inspector, the fire chief, the police chief. And it does require a lot of coordination of schedules and time. Through you, Mr. Chairman, do you have any, ma'am, can you help us understand why this has taken so long?
Mr. Speaker?
Yes. Yeah, press the button there and bring it close to you. Thank you.
It's just been really a matter of coordination of getting me heard before the board.
Getting on this agenda?
Yeah. The applicant submitted, and at that point, it was just really a waiting period.
Okay.
I think the main concern was actually advertising. It was a matter of getting it advertised, which was incumbent upon the applicant, just to clarify, that we would put it on the agenda as soon as it was advertised.
Would it be, first of all, Mr. Chairman, I agree with your premise. It does become a...
Well, I'm just trying to eliminate what's going to happen in the future. Again, we're going to get the same type of thing, and then we're going to speak to our girl downstairs and go, "Why didn't you ask them to update?" You know what I mean?
I completely agree with your premise. No question at all. I'd love to, through you, ask Jilder, what you believe the delay was caused by. Was it advertising? And who is that incumbent upon?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So what happened was, I believe, three times, if not four times, Ms. Alana?
Uh, but...
It was sent, more than, three at least, if not four. It was sent to the Patriot Ledger, and I expected you to follow through with them. And that didn't happen, and it didn't meet the 10-day deadline to be published. So we had to aim at another agenda, and that's why it was delayed.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Point taken, though, Scott. Is that the will of the board, or is that another matter?
I'll make that another matter at a different time. We'll move forward with this, but if I'm running the hearings, I won't open, if I see this. It's just not fair to the people out there that, you know, maybe they couldn't be here, maybe they thought it was a dead item. I don't know. But you can't have something that's, almost eight months out of the way.
Also, the facts may change from seven months ago, you know, to now. So...
That's the only thing I worry about.
I just want to go on record in defense of the people downstairs. The delay was not caused by the town.
No, no, that's what I mean.
Thank you.
It's not, that's why I want to lock it down, so that if they come in looking for it, they're going to know that it's up to the applicant to move ahead. And that they're going to know that it's going to be on the paper, that if anything goes beyond a certain amount of time that we set. And I think 60 days is more than enough time to figure things out. And if they need an extension because one of our people can't get there or they can't be there, ask for it. But I don't think we should be looking at stuff from January and thinking it's all right.
Yeah.
So, ma'am, you now have the floor. Tell us about what you want to do, and how you're going to do it. And just talk into the microphone so that everybody can hear what you're doing. Pull it closer to you. Thank you. Go ahead. Put past that, it'll be green. Put past that, it'll be green. There you go.
So really what I'm looking to do is, the entertainment license is for the, just like a basic karaoke night, like maybe on a Wednesday or Thursday. There's no specific night, depends on when I can get the individual there to host it. Like maybe have a vocalist there one night. It's just really for quick, basic entertainment. I was told, I did submit an application. At the same time, I renewed my liquor license. I was told by Kelly I didn't need it. And then I got a visit from, I'm sorry, I can't remember the gentleman's name, from the town, saying that I would need to apply. He actually came into the, to the bar. So at that time, I did bring the application back, submitted it, and then we've gone on this process. And really, it's just been me being in and out of town, not attached to my email. And then by the time it got to me, it was like too late, excuse me, to post and pay and stuff like that. So that's been the delay on my end. But it's really nothing too exhausting in terms of the community. I typically have my fixed hours. The crowds aren't overwhelmingly large where they have to spill out, or I have to turn people away. It's just for entertainment, which is accustomed to some of the other bars in the neighborhood that they do.
Okay. Thank you.
Nothing is being called outside. It's, it's all on the inside.
I'll go to the members of the board. Deborah?
Yes, I do have several questions, Mr. Chairman. Hello. Hi, nice seeing you again. I've visited your establishment, Toffee Social, and very good food, and nice ambiance. So I'll say that for starters. My clarifying questions, it's not in the information that I have, the application. It's more, what hours are you planning to have the entertainment? Because they said in one part of the, the write-up that there was a complaint. So I don't know if there is, has actually been a complaint because of noise, or this is just something someone says. There may be a complaint because now you have advertisement.
So I have not been approached by any complaints on any level-
That's what I thought.
-since I've been there. The typical times that I have entertainment are from like maybe 7 to 10, really. And then I would say probably the latest has been like 11. And that's just due to people wanting to stay on the mic and karaoke carrying on a little longer. In terms of entertainment, the vocalist usually does like a maybe two and a half, three hours max set. And then I've had open mic, where that typically takes place like two and a half to three hours. And that is done, pretty much wraps up well in advance at the time that I close. So it's nothing that goes to one. I really just put down the hours that kind of match what I already have for my license, just in case I spilled over, it was a good night, and we had a lot of artists that might have wanted to, you know, to do poetry or something like that. So I wanted to make sure that I was covered if that happened. But it's typically like a two and a half to three hour, usually starts at 7, and then may end at 10.
So because the zoning is mixed use, so on your level, it's commercial, so it's the tavern bar, and the upper level is a resident, right? And let's say, for example, that resident has, has to get up early and go to work.
Yes.
So if you had your choice of hours for the entertainment, would you say that no later than, let's say, 11:00 PM? So 7, 7 to 11, I'm just making this up. So if we put a restriction on 7 to 11, and what about the days? Would you say, what days would, are you thinking? I'm just trying to narrow it down because it, on the application, it just, it says the time that you open your establishment and it closes. But I didn't think you wanted entertainment for that period of time, 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM?
No. So I wondered a little flexibility in terms of brunch. So if I open early and have like a 12 to 3 for brunch, and then I have like someone that does a jazz set, so that could be something that's during the day for brunch. And then the flexibility goes into nighttime. Like I was saying, for the karaoke open mic, I typically have that from like 8 to 10 or 7 to 10. I don't go too long with that, unless there are a couple artists we want to get up on the mic, just so that they can have a run at it. But otherwise, it's just really two to three hour event. It, it doesn't really, I typically have them on some of my slower days to pick up patronize.
Right, right.
Usually like a Thursday is the, typically is the karaoke day. Sunday during, I close at 5, so I close pretty early on Sunday. If I have someone there, they are there from like maybe 12 to 3 on a Sunday. But I haven't had many Sundays as of late in terms of performances. So my performances have mainly been during, during the beginning of the week, just to pick up on those slow days. And so that looks like for me on Wednesdays and Thursdays.
Thank you. That, that really helps me to nail down what hours for your entertainment. The second question is the use of an amplifier. Now, an amplifier, I'm thinking about residents or citizens that live upstairs. If you use an amplifier, you're using it so you can amplify the sound within your establishment. But an ampli, what, how much noise do you anticipate? I, I really don't know that much about amplifiers and how sound travels.
So it's, it is an elevated speaker, so it's a, if you can imagine like a boss speaker. It's typically in that format, but it, the individual who may be hosting that night usually has it up on a stand.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So what, yeah, so what that would do, so the range is very adjustable, and you've been, it's a very quaint place.
Yes, it is.
So the acoustics carry anyway. We don't need a lot of output from that. But typically, they, they bring their own. I do have one, if you've been there before, the Music Just Streams. They are welcome to use mine if it kind of, you know, matches what they have, or they're welcome to bring their own. So those are the things that we do. It's not necessarily like a huge, kind of like a speaker that goes the size of this table, or the size of the particular furniture right there.
Oh, I got it.
Yeah.
So it's not like you're, you have a drummer, and he's drumming to so loud, and you've got the amplifier. It's not that at all. It's more quaint and-
Yes.
I got it.
I just want to add that my particular style is not loud and exhausting. So it's more of the jazz tone, the small R&B, things like that. So kind of like Anita Baker, things like that.
Oh, I got it.
You know what I mean? So that is the type of environment that I have now, and those artists that I bring in fit within that mode.
Thank you. That's very clear. Thank you. I'm through, Mr. Chairman. I understand.
Mr. Kavy?
I, I love your restaurant. I love the food. I especially, everything is wonderful, but I think one of the things that, that you do especially well is hiring. I think that your staff is wonderful people, and I always love seeing them, and I love seeing you as well. So thank you very much for, for, for coming before us. My questions were actually mostly covered by, by Deborah Roberts, so I'm, I'm in good shape, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kavy. Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you. In short, I'm not in favor of this application at all. If we remember how this business was located, it was basically an error made by the planning board some time ago, that a suggestion was made to, once something started there, couldn't go there, they suggested do a lounge. And the property owner invested a lot of money to make it a lounge with no commitment for a liquor license, which kind of put this board in a very difficult position. You can't say no that a town board suggested the use. So with that, I was against the location there. I didn't think it was a location for that type of a business at that location, because of that same thing we're talking about. There are residences on top of that building. People live there, you know, and we have a great tenant in there that's, you know, great business owner, that means well. But again, we can't control that. And I don't think that we should be changing that district, because once we do, there's other uses that'll want to come in that are similar, then we get competing. We change that in a way that may not be good. Who, who knows? This is just my fear, and I use my fear from a lot of years on this board and watching areas change. But when it's all said and done, there are people that need to live there. Amplifiers, speakers, karaoke. I've heard some people, you know, that were like Britney Spears singing, you know, that have a beautiful voice, and, you know, there's some good voices. They're loud. They're loud, they're good. And the music can be loud. And sometimes it's not intentional, it just grows that way. And it's an old building. The walls are thin. There's not the modern day insulation that you would have for that sound. And I just think that people that live there have the right to be able to sit after a meal, enjoy their family, and not have the floor thumping, or just hearing it. They're going to hear it. With an amplifier, they're going to hear it. There's no two ways about it. So I think with this, I won't be voting for it, and I would encourage my colleagues not to. And it's not of a personal nature. I've heard, the chairman goes in there, and I've heard other people that I know and I trust, it's a beautiful place. It's a beautiful place because it is what it is now. This isn't a necessity use. And I won't be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. Mr. Gito, do you have anything you would like to say, sir?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Lou.
Your, your request is Monday through Saturday for entertainment. And yet you said earlier that, that you have entertainment on Sundays as well? So I'm just checking back to see what it is that we're dealing with here.
Yes. So I do want to clarify that. So my request in my application is broad, so that when I am planning for a particular event, events like, let's say, Mother's Day, Father's Day, if it falls on a Sunday, I want to have a band there for jazz, for brunch, or things like that. I'm able to do so, so that gives me a little bit of forecasting on how I want to plan to have someone come into the space for that entertainment. So that is why it's broad. I don't particularly have specific days, because I have to rely on booking individuals. A lot of time, individuals do other spots, like Ming Do, things like that. So I have to kind of fall in line where they have availability for me. And that's why I just didn't pin my, pin myself to one day or two days. I just wanted to make it that, so I have the option of when I book someone, it's, it's within that timeframe.
Let me repeat myself. And maybe, and maybe I have misread your application. I thought it was Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM. Am I, if, if I'm incorrect, just let you know.
You're not, Mr. Gito. I, I have it right here. It's Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM.
Yeah. And by the way, 1:00 AM is beyond Saturday evening. It gets into Sunday mornings. So I just, that's a detail, and probably needs to be dealt with when we, when we deal with a vote. But the other question that I have is, your establishment is within a building in one ownership. It's at number 10. There is a number 12 with a door, and number 14 with a door. And could you tell me, are there people in those other two, residents in those other two places as well as above yours?
Yes. That whole building is occupied. The residence above me is actually the owner of Avocado's. So our operating hours typically align with each other, where he is at work at Avocado and I am at work at Toffee Social. That is who, that is who resides above me. On the left side of me, there is a beautician, and then above her, there is another residence.
I guess that's all the questions I have. I have not been in your establishment, I'm sorry to say. But I, I hear it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. I'll, I'll put the last comment in before I send it out to the, the public. Your application has the time on it.
Yes.
We're going to have to go with that, unless the board is going to amend the times on here. We cannot expand the time into Sunday for you.
That's, yes.
You can, you can get this tonight if the board votes for it, and if you want to come back to amend it at another time to add Sunday, you can do that. But for right now, the way the charge was read, that what you put here has to go.
Okay.
All right? I'm just clarifying that, so you don't think we're being unfair.
No.
We're giving you what you want, if you get it.
Okay.
So there's nothing being held from you. Is there anybody in the audience, in the hall, who would like to speak? Cynthia, go ahead.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. I know I haven't been on the board for a number of years, but there used to be a separate Sunday entertainment license. Has that changed? You used to be able to get Monday through Saturday, but you had to come back for a second that was specifically for Sunday.
I believe that is still correct. I was informed, at least by downstairs.
I, I don't, I don't think, I think, yeah, like Joe says, if it's close to a church or something like that, I think that's where it falls in, Cynthia. And the other thing is, liquor stores, Sunday licenses are different than weekday licenses. They pay extra for that.
Okay. I personally don't have any objections. What I'm hearing sounds reasonable. What I would suggest is, you folks know that you're going to be renewing her licenses in five months. So if you get a raft of complaints, that's when to take it up. The other thing is, to the petitioner, perhaps you could give each of the tenants a card with the name of the bartender and the phone number, so that if, it should happen that on a particular occasion, the jazz is making the floor thump, before the person calls the police, they could call downstairs and say, "This is too much." Obviously, if it's 7 o'clock in the afternoon, I'd, I'd have to say, "Come on."
So I-
But if it's 11 or 12, then we do this with the festers. There's a point person that you can call and say, "This is too much," before we bother with the cops. And that seems reasonable. I don't know your tenants. Maybe they are very sensitive. All I'd have to do is take out my hearing aids, and I'd be fine.
Thank you, Cynthia. Would you like to say something, ma'am?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the tenants and I are familiar with each other. So we are very approachable to each other. So I would think at this particular point in time-
There's good communication?
Yeah, they are comfortable with coming down.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you. If there's nobody else who has any questions on the board that want to say anything else, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion from Joe, and a second from Deborah. Mr. Gito, how do you say?
Yes.
Joe?
No.
No, no, no. This is to close the hearing.
I'm sorry, yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the hearing is now closed. Now, I will entertain a wish from the board on how to move forward with this.
I move, are you open for a motion?
Yep, go ahead, Deb.
I move that we allow the entertainment license from Monday to Saturday, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And that would allow for wiggle room?
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Gito. Does the board have anything they would like to discuss on the motion? Ms. Dix Kavy?
Thank you very much. So I do, uh, very much love the establishment. I think you do an amazing job. I, I do worry about the fact that this is mixed use of, uh, a building, the people living there, and though you have a good relationship with the tenants, uh, tenants change. And so there might be, it might, think something might be different six months, a year, two years from now. And, um, there might become a time when you decide you're, sell your business, and the person who buys it inherits these licenses as well. So given the amount of change that's possible, I feel like this is a very, um, uh, there's, there's a lot of like, um, ambiguity and sort of, uh, as to what will ultimately happen with a, with a business that is separated away from, from residencies. Uh, you, you can feel pretty confident that, that, that there won't be a noise complaint, uh, given where this is. I, I predict within five, 10 years, you know, this, this would become an issue. I do worry about that. And I think it's important that people be able to have peace in their, in their living rooms. So, so for that, for that reason, and, uh, please forgive me, but I'm gonna vote no on this one.
Joe, do you have anything you want to say to add to the, the motion yet?
No, no, I've, I've spoken my piece. Thank you.
All right. Cynthia, Lou, do you have anything else you want to add, do you?
No, I don't. Uh, I mean, I think that, uh, if, if this is not going to, uh, to move ahead, um, then that's fine. The, I think that the, uh, the owner of the building is basically responsible for knowing whether or not, uh, they want to, uh, have this license. I, I don't know whether there's been any, uh, discussion by, by the owner as to whether or not, uh, uh, they will be able to, uh, to rent the upstairs, uh, for apartments or not. But that's not, uh, that's not within the purview of the applicant.
Correct. All right, so we have a motion on the table that was, um, put out by Ms. Roberts that she'll approve the license Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And we add a second on that. So I'll now, I'll now, um, call the board for a roll call. Ms. Robb, oh, go ahead.
Excuse me, before we do the roll call, a little more discussion?
Go ahead.
So for the town of Stoughton, especially the downtown area, we're, we're talking about two different issues. We're talking economic development. So we have a business owner that's trying to grow her business and be successful. And from our perspective, the town's perspective, we are trying to increase our economic development. So we have a partner. It's a partnership to do that. And that is with the Toffee Social, the owner of that business, and us, economic development and growing her sales. On the, the other side is we have a responsibility to the tenants. So those are the residents that live in the apartments in the surrounding area. They want a peaceful existence. You know, they want to be able to go home and get rest or do whatever they want to do. So, so we, it's a balancing act for us. I'm asking us to give some leniency to see if it will work. Maybe, uh, restrict or limit the, the time. And then she's, um, the business owner will come back to us in, in December anyway, and we can, um, we can do a further assessment. Did this work? Was it a good decision? Because this is a work in progress. We're trying to see if we can make things work. She was also, the business owner of Soci Toffee, was amenable to changing some hours. So maybe, or, uh, restricting the days if we, if this is a test. And let's say it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday that we would do that, and along with the time span, and the time would be restricted. I think it's, it's some consideration for the board, and we don't always have to make a decision right now and think of the impact 10 years down the road because we always have an opportunity to change. Especially in this case, we're gonna revisit this in December. So that's what I say, and that's why I would like to still work with the business owner to, and the, my fellow board members, to see what we could do to make this a win-win-win. So the win for the business owner, the win for us, the town, and the win for the residents. The win-win-win is what I was after.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to say about that. Thank you very much for listening.
I, I just want to ask one question to the petitioner. Have you been operating karaoke and everything in your establishment before you came here?
I did have karaoke. That is why I was approached by a gentleman from the town that I would need to apply.
So you've been, you've been doing this already?
Yes, I've had karaoke there. I've had, um, an open mic there with, uh, the, I think it's the Stoughton Diversity Inclusion, um, Club. So I've had a couple of events there. Uh, and like I said, when I submitted the application along with the complete application for the renewal for the legal license, I was told I didn't need it. And that my assumption was is because of, I'm not doing like bands or all the drums and the live music and stuff. But then I was approached by the town that said I would need to apply. So then I did come and, and reapply.
Because I did have somebody approach me and say it was going on, and then it was advertised.
Yep, yep.
And, and, and I saw that.
Yep, I advertised it on my social media. I mean, I wasn't.
I'm a big proponent for people that, that try to stretch things and get it, and then, well, it's been going on, you know? And then if we take it away from you, feel as though we're picking on you, uh, if, if it goes that way. And I'm not saying it is. I'm just saying, don't be offended if it, if it happens. Because people are doing an awful lot of soft openings, a little play with here and there. Just, it was up to you to bring it to us. You dragged your feet. That's, you said it. So that's where it lies. So I think Ms. Roberts gave you a, a big door, and we'll revisit it again coming up soon.
Yep.
All right? So now I'm gonna call for the vote that was motioned and seconded. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
No.
Mr. Kavy?
No.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
So we have an even cut, and I'm gonna give you a yes. So it's three to two.
Thank you.
And I hope you understand what I just said to you, because I won't be easy next time.
Absolutely. I am not taking it, um, as a form of a personal attack on me. I do understand that I am in a residential slash commercial area. I think for the time that I've, uh, been there in terms of the neighborhood and neighbors, like I said, we are neighborly. Um, I am approachable. We've had conversations. They've been to the bar. Um, so I think they would be comfortable with saying, listen, uh, you know, tonight is not a good night, or this coming Saturday, you know, maybe you can do it another day, things like that. So those negotiations I am all for. I'm not looking to alienate. I'm just looking to kind of do a couple of attractions, bring people in, and, um, have, let people have a good time. Yeah.
I, I understand you have an investment. That's why I'm giving you the, the nod. Thank you. You're all set, ma'am?
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Call him up. Are the applicants for Imperial Pecan here? Come on up, folks. Joe, are you gonna babysit for them? Thank you.
So with the microphones, uh, just, uh, if you press the button when it's green and just pull it close so they're able to hear you. Thank you so much.
What's that, Steve? Yeah. I'm gonna read, and then we'll open the hearing for you. A public hearing will be held by the select board on July 16th, 2024, at 8:00 PM to consider the application of the Imperial Pecana LLC located at 811 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass., 02072, for the application of a license as a comment victula. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., and/or virtually, and via Google Meets, and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Livestream, Google Meets video link, and telephone connection for the public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-130092, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov. Can I have a, a motion to open the hearing, please?
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And the chairman votes. So it's 5:00 to open. I will read the, uh, department info. We have the application, um, board members, that says, um, counter seating is eight, table seating is 12, it's a total capacity of 20. They have, uh, men's room, women's room, and the hours of operation is 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Is that right? And they have use of a dumpster. Um, we have their insurance certificate. They have an exterior, um, grease trap, 1,000 gallons. And you have secured Pedersky Corporation to, to handle the grease trap, right? Yes, thank you. Um, we have response from, um, Assistant Chief May Comba from the Fire Department. He has approved it, and the date was June 17th. We have, um, Chief McNamara has approved from the, um, Police Department. There's an attached letter that says, um, I have received the application and we have no objection for the applicant. That's from the Chief of Police, Donna McNamara. Um, Sean Leahy from Border Health, he says they obtained a Border Health permit and has passed all pre-op inspections, and they have, um, the grease trap all set. From Building and Zoning, Mr. Jack Erickson, he has approved it. Teresa Cardoza from the Treasurer's Office, they have no, um, no outstanding problems. From Karen at the Water Department, Karen Brown, that they are all set to an approval. All right. It's all yours. Tell us how you wanna, um, what you're gonna do, and then I'll open up to my members that to talk to you about it. Pull that, pull that in close to you. It's green, so you're good. Go ahead.
Uh, it's gonna be breakfast.
Breakfast.
Lunch and dinner. And it's gonna be Brazilian food. Sandwiches.
Don't be shy. Tell everybody, this is your chance to roll.
He's the cook. I don't know.
What's the matter with the cook?
He's telling, he's telling me what to say. Yeah, pastry, pastry, um, sweets, like cakes, dessert, and the food is gonna be great. Yeah, so it's gonna be, um, barbecue, but the only thing they're gonna use is the, just the grill. We don't have the rotisserie.
Right, right.
Yeah, just the grill.
Awesome. So that's it?
Yeah. For now, you said for now, yeah.
Okay. Deborah, do you have anything you'd like to say?
What type of cuisine is it? Can you?
Brazilian.
Brazilian?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's. Um, what is, I know you, you gave the hours and you said breakfast, lunch, and dinner, or what is, what makes your restaurant so unique? Tell us about that.
It's the type of food.
Well, Brazilian, yeah.
You gotta make him talk here.
Yeah.
I'm sitting here throwing you right under the bus.
The seasoning. The seasoning, yeah, the seasoning of the food.
Yes. Wellington. Você fala tanto, eu não quero falar nada. It's all English.
He talks, he talks, he talks, but he doesn't want to talk today.
He talks a lot.
Don't be shy.
I have no other question. You speak English. Go ahead.
Well, that's, that's good. He'll, he'll do more cooking than talking, right?
Yeah, he's the one that cooks. I, I don't know, I just eat.
Are you set?
All set, thank you.
Steve, would you like to say something?
Yeah, I always like to hear about the cuisine. Uh, I'm excited to hear that you're doing breakfast. Uh, there's a lot of good breakfast places in town, uh, and I'd be intrigued to, I don't think I've ever had a Brazilian breakfast, so I'd be curious, you know, what, if it's beyond, um, uh, you know, eggs and, you know, and such, if there's other, other, I guess, the pastr, pastries as well as, uh, um, other types of.
All the pasta, like all the Brazilian, um, pastry, and they have like different sandwiches, like with, um, como é que é, chorizo? Chorizo, link, cheese, cheese bread. So it's different. So que mais? Cakes, different Brazilian cakes, like cassava cake. It's very good.
It's not fattening, right?
Uh, a little bit.
Wash it down with water.
Just walk, walk back and forth, it's gonna be all set.
I'll park on the other side of town.
Right across the street.
I heard a lot of cakes.
Yeah, they have sweets, good sweets. Tapioca, tapioca is good for, for.
Nice.
Okay, I'm gonna jump in.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna catch you on that one. Tell me what that is and what it tastes like.
Tapioca?
Yes.
Tapioca, it's a type of, uh, pastry.
Okay.
Made with cassava flour, and you can, different fillings. There are sweet fillings that you can fill it with the, uh, with meat, with, um, eggs, tuna, whatever you want to put it inside, and it does it on a, on a pan.
One more question?
Go ahead.
Here's the big one. What sets you, I like spicy food.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yeah.
Good. See, now he's coming to life. See him smiling? Okay? What should I come try? If I like a nice spicy meal, what should I come try? Like watching a game show.
There is a, a food called muqueca. It's like a stew made with, uh, seafood, like shrimp, fish, and it has, um, como é que chama aquele óleo? Um, dendang. 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 It's an oil made with the palm tree. So they use that, and.
Tomato.
Tomatoes and a lot of seasoning, and they put a lot of, um, spicy, spicy the way you like it.
Well, for all the tens of people that are watching us at home, you just got a great Thank you.
I'll be bye. Mr. Gito, do you have something you'd like to add?
I don't know if it's an addition or not, but, uh, but I do have a question. You, uh, you live in Cumberland, Rhode Island?
Yes.
And, uh, and. And, and your hours are 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. That's a long drive back and forth as well as the time that you're working. I just hope that you, you have enough stamina for that. That's not a question.
No, he's gonna have somebody to open the establishment in the morning. We wanna come to the place around 1112. And it's not a long drive. It's like, nah, 25 minutes the most.
So you have, how many people are gonna be working here?
Four.
Four.
Four. He's planning on four people.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience or online who'd like to say anything? Cynthia?
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. Where is 811? Is it the, is it the corner railroad avenue, Washington?
It used to be the sushi place.
Okay. I noticed the change in signs. I've had Brazilian food. There are other Brazilian places in town, so I've tasted the food. What intrigues me is the sweets. So obviously, I wish them every success.
Thank you.
All right. Nobody online?
Nobody online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close. Unless, unless somebody has anything else.
Before we close, could I say one more thing?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Gito.
The application says there's only gonna be one employee. You said four? I mean, quite frankly, I would rather it be four than one. The reason that I asked the question is, I saw that there was only one.
Yeah, he made the mistake. I don't know who helped me fill out the application, but he's gonna fix that.
Okay, thank you. Look, that wasn't a complaint or anything. It was just, it was the reason that I asked the question.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was due January 10th, so the time, you might have had one employee. The application doesn't, I think it's the worker compensation insurance affidavit that says you have one employee.
Well, it's funny, and I understand this. In my life, I cover myself. You never used to be able to, but now you do. See, the, I'm construction, so it's heavy, and it's industrial. They're working in an establishment. They don't have to cover themselves. That's why if they have, you know, four, maybe that the owners aren't covering themselves, and then they have one person that they cover. I can understand that, but if it's on the other one, you can just list four if you have to. But I understand where you're coming from on the, on the workman's comp. It's a waiver. So...
Was there a motion to close?
Yeah, we'll go. Deborah made a motion, and Steve seconded it. Mr. Gito, how you say?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
And I say yes. All right. The hearing's closed. What's the wish of the board, please?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Joe, to approve, and Deborah, second. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I vote yes. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's so nice meeting you. Thanks.
Get that hot sauce ready.
Mohammed, are you out there? National Grid?
Hello, can you guys hear me?
I'm gonna open the hearing, so hang tight.
Yep, no problem.
A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Tuesday, July 16th, 2024, at 8:00 PM to consider the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon New England Inc., who are requesting permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Camden Street, install two JO poles, joint poles, on the corner of Camden Street and Park Street, beginning at the point 40 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Park and Camden Street, and continuing across 230 feet in the west direction, installing pole 3-50 with push brace on the corner of Camden and Park Street. Also installing, installing pole three on Camden Street, project number 30799245. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall at Town Hall, third floor, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass. and/or virtual and Google Meets, and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Livestream, Google Meets Video Link and Telephone Connection for public comment available by, by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov. I'll entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So may.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second.
And I have a second from Steve. Deborah?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the hearing's open. Mohammed, you can speak to what you need here, sir.
Okay, thank you. So as you kind of read, for this design, we are installing a new pole at the corner of Camden and Park Street, and another pole a little ways down Camden Street. The reason we are doing this install is we need to pull the primary wire down over there so we can bring power to a new, I'm not sure if it's a new development. I'm not sure what's happening over there, but it is happening behind the Burger King. So the reason for those two pole installs is so we can get power over to that building.
The, the building is a storage facility, right? Go ahead.
Correct.
And your name for the record, sir?
Oh, my name is Mohammed.
Yeah, Leo Henigan and Mohammed. All right. Thank you, Mohammed. Would you like to say something at all for, maybe to enlighten us? I know what the site is, but for those at home, you can just give them a little insight.
So this project is started seven years ago, and we went through the whole, the whole process of getting development, and we're 95% complete on the construction, and we were hoping, open the beginning of July, and we're close, but what we do need is the power. I'm afraid, excuse me, I'm afraid of damages from precipitation inside the building. It's perforated steel walls, and there's a huge layer of water on every floor, and I'm just really getting nervous on warranty issues, and I can't turn my air conditioner on in the building until we get the, the power running properly.
Yeah, it hasn't been a good work season. I'll go to you, Mr. McCrisky, if you have any questions? No? Mr. Gito, do you have any questions, sir?
No.
No. Steve?
Yeah, I have a question for, for Mohammed. Thank you for, for joining us tonight. I hope you don't take this the wrong way, but I do have to ask this. One of the reasons why we're seeing this tonight and not last week or even earlier, most importantly, I think we were originally supposed to see this on July 3rd, was because National Grid was not able to advertise because they hadn't, as I understood it, they had a billing dispute with, with the Stoughton newspaper, Stoughton Journal. And so even though everything was done, we weren't able to get that, that advertised in time for, for our July 3rd meeting. Since then, it looks like whatever the dispute was has been worked out. We were able to advertise successfully, but, but that puts a developer in the town of Stoughton behind two weeks, and as is already mentioned, this has, you know, potentially, you know, real ramifications that there won't be damage to the building because of this delay. What I'd like to see, and I'd like a commitment on, is that his, that this, that this pole project be expedited in order to get him moving a little bit faster, because the delay was not his, any fault of his or the town's. I'm asking National Grid to prioritize this in their queue, and I was wondering if you were able to make that commitment.
I can definitely forward the message. In terms of how we do things, I am personally just a designer, so I will complete the design. I personally didn't do this design, just prefaces, but as a designer, we will complete the design, and then it gets pushed forward. There's a price that gets pushed forward into the billing department. Billing kind of handles all the conversation between people, and then once that is complete, then here we are now. I can definitely forward that. I do know, I can definitely push that towards the supervisors who do actually go out there and perform the work, but I don't wanna, I can't really give you a timeframe in order, I don't wanna make any false promises or anything like that.
It's not a problem, but I, but we will be following up with that. So if you don't mind, it's like the, the town manager probably would be, be delegated to their engineering department, Brad Martensdale, will follow up with you specifically to, to see where that stands, and if we need to escalate it within your, within your company, your organization. I would highly, I very much appreciate that. You know, we all do our part here, and I just wanna make sure that, 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 just in the interest of fairness, a developer in our town is able to get the, get this in an expedited way. But thank you very much, and I appreciate your, your willingness to help out on this.
No problem. Do you guys need my contact information, or do you guys have that?
Yeah, we're gonna need that. If, if you don't mind, you probably, on the notice itself, if you're able to see it, if you can email gparreira@stoughton-ma.gov. Are you able to see that in the, the notice? That was the notice that you, your organization advertised. If you would get in contact with her, alternatively, town manager@stoughton-ma.gov.
Is it, did you say Scott Carrera?
No, it's G, so I'm gonna spell it out for you. G-P-E-R-I, sorry, E-I-R-A. I already messed it up. I'm sorry. Let me try that again. G-P-E-R-E-I-R-A@stoughton, S-T-O-U-G-H-T-O-N-dash-M-A.gov. If you'll reach out to her, and we also have your name, but we'll, we'll make sure that we follow up. If you don't mind following up tomorrow, we'll start tracking this on our side as well.
Okay, yeah, for sure. I'll, I'll send out the email right now while we are all on here, and it should be good.
Okay, yeah, and when you, when you do it, Jilda, if you don't mind, just confirming that you receive it, then we'll, we'll start the process of, of tracking this. And once again, thank you very much for, for your willingness to help out.
No problem.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they would like to say? Anybody in the audience? Go ahead, Cynthia.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. I mean, this is definitely my bailiwick, and I'm very disappointed that there's some potential for harm to this gentleman's property because of something that's beyond the town's control. In the future, I hope the town gets some sort of contact person other than a designer, so that we don't ever have this happen again. If you've been by, it's a, it's a humongous building, and to have any water damage in there is just beyond the pale. It's very disappointing when we work so hard to bring people into town to develop the tax base and then have them face this situation through no fault of the town. But we really should have the name and address, forget the email, the name, address, and phone number of a contact person that we can call right away, so that someone doesn't have to sit here for hours and tell us about his problem. I mean, it's very, very disappointing. As someone who owns 10 acres of industrial property that potentially will be developed someday, I'd hate for my heirs to have to go through what this gentleman's gone through. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Joe, go ahead.
Thank you. I apologize. I was asking the town manager earlier another question during your comments. I apologize. I didn't hear them. Could you repeat what you said?
So I've, I've been working on this project for seven years.
Which project is that?
It's 19 Camden Street.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
And, and we went through COVID, we went through zoning changes, every obstacle we hit.
I followed that project.
And we're in the, ready to bring it right to the end zone, and, and it's disheartening because we've taken, since we've got the permits to build on this and we've gotten the temporary power, we've been making efforts to set up our appointments to, to get our telephone poles. So it's been a 10-month process with my electrician, and I am, like, I got involved on it January 1st after realizing we're starting to have a problem, and it's, it's mid-July, and it seems like it's a simple formality to get approvals for telephone poles. I'm not that technical when it comes to what we need, but the damages that's happening is, if you go in there, you come out and it looks like you took a shower. That's how much water's in the air and in the walls, and you, you go on the first floor, it's 70 degrees. The second floor, it's 80 degrees. The third floor, it's 90, and it goes up to 100 on the fourth floor. Yeah, and so all the water is condensating on the floors on all the units, and the, it's a steel wall. I'm worried about rust. I really am. Or rust from the screws that are applying it to the structure, and, you know, I'm worried about damages in that sense. And on top of that, I'm trying to sell a temporary, temperature-controlled service, and we have no control over the temperatures right now.
How, how long did I know that there was an issue with the shopper's guide on a billing issue or something like that?
Yeah, so this actually has cropped up more than once. I thought it was addressed the first time that we brought this to their attention. But in, in April, I think it was early April, I could be wrong, but it was early April, there was a applicant who, actually, I think it was a friend, somebody who you knew, or maybe not a friend, but somebody who you're familiar with on West Street, who was looking for some poles to be put up for a new property, and, and they were delayed multiple times because, the, yeah, it was for quite a while, but I think one of the issues that came down to was, the advertisements were all ready to go, but they, but National Grid had had a billing dispute with, with the, with the, you know, publication of record with, I think it's the Stoughton, was it the Stoughton Journal? Patriot Ledger. I apologize.
So this, this is a joint application. Is it the responsible, who's the lead on it? Is it Verizon or N-Grid?
It's, it's National Grid's responsibility to cover the cost of that, of that advertising. It's National Grid's responsibility to cover the cost of that advertising.
Yeah, okay.
And with the previous case, we were able to... The town was able to intervene and help out with the advertising of the local resident whose project was being delayed. But that was in April. And so, you know, I would have thought... And we let National Grid aware of this. We had the multiple emails back and forth. I know Jilda had a lot to do with that. And so to find in June, which is when we tried to advertise for the July 3rd, to see that it still hadn't been resolved was problematic.
I know, I think I'm pretty sure that the town engineer has a contract there that has been very supportive of the town of Stoughton in the past. I'll consult with him tomorrow because I have a number that I can call. So I think Mark and I can...
Sorry.
Mark and I can talk to some people, I believe.
So, Mr. Chairman, we do have a liaison for National Grid and Verizon. We speak to them frequently, particularly during storms, to set priorities. And to your point, Steve, we not only... Jilda not only resolved the situation with the Patriot Ledger, we paid the bill on behalf of National Grid so that it could be advertised.
This was the West Street, yeah.
First one. It's unacceptable. And we wrote to the liaison. The liaison did push up the ladder, but it's like dealing with the federal government sometimes.
Yeah.
Totally unacceptable.
I have it in my list. I'm sorry.
I'll entertain a motion to close. I have Joe.
Second.
Steve? Mr. Gito, how you say?
Yes. Don't do you.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
And I vote yes. What's the wish of the board?
Vice Chair, I move that we approve the request for the joint pole petition.
I have a motion by Mr. Cavey.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Roberts. I will poll the board. Deborah?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
And I vote yes. You're all set, sir?
To the button.
I want to thank everyone for taking the time. It's like a personal matter. It's been time and effort, and we're so close. And I really appreciate the effort. Thank you again.
And we'll see what we can do to help it expedite, sir.
Thank you.
I apologize for the interruption. I just want to make sure you guys got that email. And I also do apologize for any inconvenience throughout this project. I didn't have much to do with this one, but I will definitely push forward in terms of, you know, hopefully getting this expedited.
Thank you, Mohammed.
Yeah, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
Oh, Mohammed, if you're still on. We haven't yet received an email from you, so we might have given you... There might be a misunderstanding on the address.
You got it now.
Yeah, let me take a look. I did send it to G-P-E-R-E-I-R-A@stoughton-ma.gov.
Actually, you're able to see the screen, right? You're able... You have a computer in front of you?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen so you're able to see the actual address. Share briefly here. So this is the public notice, which I'm hoping you're able to see on there.
Yes, I can.
And at the very bottom of the page in blue, you'll see the email address that we'll need you to send that to.
Okay. Okay, I just... I just resent it. Think I saw I made a little spelling error.
It might have been my fault, but I appreciate you hanging on to help us make sure, resolve that.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, we've received your email. Thank you so much, Mohammed.
No problem. You guys have a good one.
You're welcome. Okay, so we're going to take... Once again, thank you very much, Vice Chair Carrera, for leading those public hearings, as always. Well done. We only have one more item on the agenda. The open meeting agenda is consent agenda. We have four items. A, approve open session minutes, meeting of July 3, 2024. B, acceptance of donation from Copeland Family or Copeland Family Foundation Incorporated for Stoughton Animal Control Department. Item C, billing department, weight and measures, and licensing fee changes. And item D, application for a block party for road closure on Malcolm Road on August 11, 2024 by Delcy Mason. I might be mispronouncing the first name, and I apologize if I did. Is there... Would anybody like to discuss any items on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to either pull or let you know that I'm going to abstain on item number A. I was not at that meeting.
Thank you.
So how do you want to deal with it? Do you want to pull that and vote on the rest?
Yeah, we'll see if anybody want to pull any other items besides item number A. Nope. So we'll just start by taking a vote on item A alone. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from meeting of July 3, 2024.
So made.
Okay. Okay, motion was made and seconded. So Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Abstain.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items B, C, and D.
So made, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, made by Ms. McCrisky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Carrera. Ms. Roberts?